AV ready in the back, Jack? We're good to go, okay? Good evening. You're at a common council meeting of the city of Wausau, Monday, August 19th, 6:00 PM. Just a couple of notes here before we get going is, no, I tell you what, we'll call the order and I'll make that a note a minute after that. Would you join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would the clerks call roll, please?
We have ten voting members present.
I have no proclamations, but I do have one announcement regarding the rules tonight. According to the standing rules of the council, Chapter 2.16, Rule 6B, the council will be in receipt of packets, council packets, committee or council packets must contain the results of each measure to be considered. If for good cause this prefiling is impossible or impractical, the presiding officer of the council or the chairperson of the committee may waive this requirement. So this is commonly known as the six-day rule. And looking at the items, I determined with the election last week, with various other things that were going on with staff, that it was appropriate to bring these forward. But I would like to remind all the alders that you all have, as we always do, have an option to table an item if you don't feel we had enough notice. As far as I'm reading this, I do not have too many concerns that on the council packet that there's any surprises here, but I'm open to taking those, or the council, this body's open to taking those for tabling. The other item I want to mention is that it's, this is more of a scrivener's error, under the suspension of the rules for the public health and safety item, this is actually Rule 1D, which provides that the transmission of committee business to the council takes three business days prior to the council meeting. So this item was taken up today at about 5:15, so we will need a two-thirds majority to vote on that. So that's 1D, not 6B or 12A. And then lastly, we have, we'd like to do a hard stop at 6:45 for the committee of the whole meeting, and we will be looking to take a motion at 6:45 to recess if we are still in the council meeting. And now we have pre-registered citizens looking to appear. So just remember, there's two meetings tonight. There's the committee of the whole on the lead service line ordinance at 6:45, and then the council meeting which starts right now. And right now, we have one registered speaker, Jonathan Betz Rojas.
Yeah, go right, there's a microphone that's on right there.
Okay. My name is Jonathan, and I'd like to speak on the resolution approving various license. So I believe that license, you know, I'm going through some stuff right now, and I would wish for, you know, a, I guess, a, I, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
It would be nice to not be labeled or, you know, sent, or not, just, it would be nice to be able to do what I need to do to, you know, maintain myself and continue to benefit the community. I feel that I'm, I'm not convicted of anything yet, and until I'm convicted, I should not be denied license. And I understand that they wish for rehabilitation, but I've, I, if I'm not convicted yet, then I can't do rehabilitation, so that doesn't allow me to keep my license. So I guess I'm kind of just asking if the denial of my license can be like pushed off a little bit. I would've came to the first meeting that I came up with, but it was wrong, it was sent to me in a weird wording, and I thought it was for something else. I can show, I can show that, I can bring that up if it needs to be, but, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm kind of blanking, I'm not good in front of crowds, but I know I'm innocent of everything, but I know I need to go through the process to be deemed so. And so to be, like, to be, to be revoked from being able to make a living in the meanwhile is kind of detrimental to my ability to benefit myself and the community. And that's all.
Thank you. And your comments will be considered on the, on that section of public health and safety, and that's item 240108 at the end of the meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Sid Sorensen.
Hi, I'm Sid. Tonight, you are approving a developers' agreement, and some of the things have changed over the years. I've been doing developing for over 35 years. In the developers' agreement, I was never informed, I never got anything to be a part of what went on. Currently, you have it where I'm supposed to be paying all the fees for the lift stations, parkland dedications, and in the past, it was always done when the lot sold or the house was built. In the developing, the small part that I'm going to be doing, it's like $300,000 is going to be out of my pocket, just to get four lots. And the primary reason is because I have one house that we're building right now that needs a higher pressure for the water. To me, I guess I don't want to be paying that stuff upfront, and the lots are not doing anything to cost the city, it's not changing anything currently, so I guess what I want to see is that those fees are held off until the lots sell. When I do this, I've got sewer and water, I've got gas, electric, curb and gutter, and everything that has to go in. I guess that's that part. Another part that I had was, on my subdivision, there is a subdivision to the west, and I have been talking, I've had this property, well, actually, some of it since '86, the rest of it's about 2,000. I've been talking to the engineering's office, saying whenever development goes on to the west side, let me know, I want to see how we can integrate things, I need to bring sewer up from that direction. And the last time I talked, two years ago maybe, and I told them again, let me know, I never heard anything. They did the development on the other side, and I didn't know it until it was too late to do anything. For one thing, for information, the first subdivision had 24 lots, there's 18 homes built, probably $9 million worth of assessments, values on the properties, I've got about 90 acres left, and I guess I want to see it, working with the city how it used to be, where we'd work together and go from step one all the way through it. So hopefully, that can happen in the future.
Okay, up next, we have Judy Lombard.
I'm Judy Lombard, my address is 149988 Skylark Lane. I am a Rib Mountain resident, not a Wausau resident, but I am here because I have a very keen interest in the Humane Society and the Humane Officer Program, which is going to be coming in front of you for a decision. I read through the packet that you received today, and you have some powerful information in that packet by national professionals telling you not to relieve the program of your humane officer, and not to put this program in the hands of minimally trained people who are probably not dedicated, maybe not even interested in humane work, and who is a body will probably be turning over and over and over. There is so much information in that packet to guide you. I hope you take advantage of that, I hope you make a good decision, and keep your humane officer, keep the program as it is, and then build on it. You have a great foundation, you have a very experienced and dedicated person to train other people and to expand this program the way Wausau needs and what Wausau deserves. I was really overpowered by the information in that packet, and I hope you all had time to look at it, consider the sources of internationally famous organizations telling you the right thing to do and the reasons why it's the right thing to do. I hope you will retain the program, retain your humane officer, and use her and that position as a building block to expand, because one person can't do this job. It's ludicrous to think that that could ever have worked. And so I hope you'll make that decision, not just for the animals of Wausau, but for the public health and safety of your residents. It's an important program, and it dovetails into a lot of other issues, dovetails into domestic violence, and a whole bunch of other things that this city has to deal with on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, up next is Ann Lummer.
Ann Lummer, Hidden Links Drive in Wausau. I'm here tonight because I'm relieved that the lead hazard reduction capacity building grant is being reconsidered. This grant was a collaboration between the city, the county, and a host of others who recognize that the importance of identifying the location of lead in homes, so it can be prioritized, to be mitigated, and then remediated. I'm a county board supervisor representing District 2, and one of my appointments is to serve on the Board of Health. Now, to be clear, I am not speaking for either of these boards, but I use the various strategic plans to guide my work on them. One of those plans is called the Community Health Improvement Plan. It is also a collaboration between the various community stakeholders and partners to improve the health of Marathon County residents. One of our strategies is centered around safe and affordable housing. Two of the performance measures for that strategy involves using lead as an indicator of success. This $2 million grant will go a long way in helping us do the work we have done in the county for a long time, and losing this money will stand in the way of that goal. I'm also a federal taxpayer, and I greatly appreciate it when federal dollars that are allocated to go somewhere in the United States come right back here to my neighborhood. I'm grateful to the grant writers who had the vision and took the effort to apply for these dollars to help alleviate the burden on our most vulnerable citizens. Lead is a toxin to people that leads to lifelong cognitive and irreversible cognitive disabilities. It's something that's preventable and unnecessary, and with this grant, we can stop future cases. So I hope you will listen carefully to the scope, the players, and the outcomes of this project. I hope you will ask good questions, because I feel it is a very important grant for us to do the work. I think it is an honor that we have even received it, because very few municipalities across the United States have been awarded this grant. I'd like to thank each and every one of you for serving on the city council. I know firsthand how difficult and important this work is. I hope you consider the other organizations like mine that are relying on this award to help us do our good work.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wanted to give public comment at this time?
Yeah, like, two of us still got to work, and...
Oh, looks like it's on the front.
Down there.
Hi, my name's Dave Riedel, I'm here representing Wagonard Partners tonight with consent agenda item 24-0812, the redevelopment of the Riverlife District. I just wanted to introduce myself, reiterate our interest, and make myself available to answer any questions on our proposal.
Sorry for bringing my phone up, I'm terrible at remembering.
You're fine. Sure, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Ashley Hockers, I live on Park Avenue in Wausau, Wisconsin. Thank you, council members, for doing what you do. But there have been a couple of things I have noticed. I will be speaking, of course, on the humane officer position that's being called into question. So the few things I've noticed that nobody else seems to have is that we've only heard negative comments from the Wausau Police Department's mouthpiece, AKA our chief, despite the fact that Ms. Bishop has worked for them for 11 years. So either she's doing excellent work, and suddenly that's a problem, or there's been mass incompetence. We should also wonder why no one has brought up or been asked in the department whether or not they've had good experiences with her, unless some of you have. And if you have, but nobody has given any alternative comment, maybe that's something that we should be worried about as far as overt coercion from the department heads. So ACLU, that's a freebie for you. Per the chief's own mouth, one of the cost-saving measures listed in his write-ups was animal abuse fines. Supposedly, we're just going to get a bunch of them now that we have three CSOs that are part-time. What's interesting is, when surrendered to an officer who supposedly will be very well-trained for 40 hours, this crack team handed over the small dog to the Humane Society, despite the fact that the dog had massive rashes, mange, extreme collar burn, overgrown toenails that were curling into its little toe beans, and cataracts. It barely could walk, and it was shivering and cold, and how long had it been outside? Now, I'm sure we'll all be really excited to know that the Humane Society did reunite them with their owner. Great, that's awesome. Why wasn't anything sought after for animal fines, or is the PD just not doing that? If they're supposed to be showing us how they're going to be really good at this, that's the worst way to do it. Okay, the only animal service group listed as a proponent of this new paradigm is the Humane Society, which is great, because they are receiving a big check from the PD. So of course, they'd be really excited about working with you. Other than that, everyone else seems to be really pro Ms. Bishop. We were never actually given, as Wausau citizens, true CSOs and an officer. So basically, we set Ms. Bishop up to fail, and now we're punishing her for it? And before I, you know, get closed off for 10 seconds, regarding the $13 million Wausau Public, our Wausau Police Department budget, which is badly stifled by $17,000, I'm wondering why they're not being brought up, all of the fines that have been amassed over the years. Maybe these are questions you should be asking, too. Thank you, and have a nice evening. I do appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ashley Bishop, 1203 North Fifth Street, Wausau. I am your current humane officer. I've come before several of the committees now to speak about the importance of what I do. I am here in totality for keeping animals safe from the community, and the community safe from the animals. That has been my goal for the last more than 20 years, and I have been dedicated to the city of Wausau for the last 11. Now, I understand that I'm not here to speak to keeping me specifically. As much as I absolutely want my job, it is important that the city of Wausau has somebody that is specifically trained and dedicated to this position. You guys have been presented with a single way of going forward. There are multiple ways to go forward with this. I actually, six days ago to be exact, requested that documents be entered into the packet that are not in there and available. Each one of you had been emailed by me directly that packet of information as well, with a separate proposal on how to maintain a dedicated humane officer, to have the three CSOs that you are talking about hiring at a moderately, almost livable wage, working 20 hours a week each, which would then give you 100 hours a week coverage, that will take on many more of the calls from the police department, which was the goal, I understand that. And with that, also allowing for more concentrated work on animal licensing, which has been the entirety of this conversation, being the one and only thing that has been a measurable amount at this point, of being able to consider what is a failure or a success. In my proposal, not only is the humane officer position able to be funded, the three CSO positions are able to be funded, and then there is an additional leave of over $14,000 that would be allowed, could be put back into the program, to be gotten safer equipment, things like bulletproof vests that are actually for each person, and other types of equipment that could be useful. I hope that you guys all individually were able to look at that proposal. Maybe it's not the best proposal, maybe it needs work, but it just goes to show that there are other options out there, and I really do hope for the citizens and the animals of the city of Wausau that you take into consideration that there should be other options. Thank you.
Thank you. And it may be a distinction here without a difference, but the information entered into the packet on the Animal Legal Defense Fund, that was an unsolicited public comment, so in theory, it should have been listed as a public comment and not part of the staff Up next, we have the consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion. We have a motion by Sarah Watson, second by Tom Neal, and Alder Henke.
Yeah, I'd like to pull agenda item 240809.
240809, the resolution approving the agreement. All right. Barring the 240809 file, I would, I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any other comments?
Motion passes 10 to 0.
I will take that item from the consent agenda, that's 240809. It's an infrastructure and facilities resolution that passed 3 to 0. Resolution approving developers' agreement with STS Investments LLC, West of Birchwood Drive and West of Old Coach Road. I have a motion from Alder Larson, second by Henke, and Alder Henke.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, Sid, I know you showed up a little bit lady, a little bit late to our infrastructure meeting, if we took this back, would that affect your timeline at all? Okay, so then, I would like to make a motion to refer this back to infrastructure and facilities, so that they can have their proper comment time, and we can revisit that.
All right, I have a motion to table or refer back to committee.
I'll second that motion.
And a second from Alder Rasmussen. And Alder Rasmussen, are you looking to speak?
I have a question with regard to the process that was used in INF to come to this charge that Mr. Sorensen referenced. I don't know if we want to, if you're going to take it back to committee, I guess you can investigate that, but there was a time where I believe subdivision charges were held until lots sold. I can remember that from years ago. So, you know, if this is different than that, perhaps that needs to be relooked at. So that was just my comment. I was going to also make a motion to refer it back, because I think that it needs a second look, and we have to look at historically what we've done with these charges, if they've been held before. That's information that committee would want to know.
Further comment with a motion to refer back to INF. Seeing none?
You may begin voting on the item to refer back to committee. Motion passes 10 to 0.
There are no mayor's appointments tonight that I'm aware of. Item up next is item 240704, from finance reconsideration of the resolution giving authority, or authorization to accept lead hazard reduction capacity building grant through the Office of Lead Hazard Control and Health Homes through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD that failed out of finance, and it failed at the last council meeting, 1 to 10. I have a motion from Henke, second by Alder Rasmussen. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I actually requested reconsideration on this one, because information emerged after we made our votes that I think is relevant. What we did not realize at the time is that our attempted return of those grant funds actually does impact the county chip program that was identified tonight by Supervisor Lummer. Also, there were many questions as to whether or not our staff had the time and ability to manage the caveats of the grant. I think since that... I think since that action on our part, there's been some discussion with the federal government. Questions need to be asked as to whether or not there's flexibility with the use of those funds. Primarily, is that grant only for locating lead but not remediating it, or is it both? Do lead pipes come into play, or are we only restricted to dealing with paint in homes? Those are big questions that came up for Tammy Strotts and her team after the fact. There was an awful lot of clerical work and reporting required and training required to manage the grant, but it seems that there is some flexibility and some assistance that may be available if we were to accept the funds, that would allow us some flexibility. I think the other thing that we need to look at is if the grant is allowable to be used for the location and the remediation of lead paint, we would need clarity as to whether or not any of that work can perhaps be delegated out or shared between the city's normal processes to abate lead paint and mechanisms that the Health Department may have if we were to collaborate with county agencies. So I think there's a lot that we need to know before we just give back $2 million. And I feel like those are some answers that we did not have when we took that action, and it may cause us to rethink our plans. So, you know, I guess I would like us to talk through some of that. I know that Tammy was gonna contact the federal agencies and see if she could gather some additional information. And last I knew, you know, those agencies were surprised at our attempt to return the funding, and were certainly hoping that we would accept it, because we were really pioneering the cause of lead in Wassa. And so before we were too quick to give back that kind of money, I think we need to have, give it a second look. Thank you.
Alder Gessman?
Yes, thank you. Well, so how are we answering those questions, you know, with regard to exactly what, what is the city's involvement as we go forth? There were some questions earlier, earlier in the summer with regard to exactly the city's staff needed for this, and some of your other questions with regard to, is it just, is it just for identifying or remediation? I think, you know, and how is that done? How much is it going to literally cost the city of Wassa with regard to staffing? You know, in Liz Brodeck's earlier letter this summer, I mean, there was a variety of issues that were brought forth, and I think, I think they are still, still in front of us. And I know the county has worked most likely involvement. We did not know that involvement earlier, early on, I believe. I'm not sure about that, but I think that we need to know exactly what the city's commitment is going to be here. Does that mean that we just hire it out, or, or what? Does, do we have answers for that, exactly how we're going to be proceeding? I think that we need to know that. Maybe it has to go back to a standing committee of the city council to ask those questions. I don't know if those questions are answerable tonight, but it's not for remediation, as far as I can see. I just need to know some of those answers, and exactly what the city's involvement, and how much, and how much further into our budget we're going to have to commit the citizens of the city of Wassa. Thank you.
Looks like we have Tammy coming up to address that.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if I was allowed to come up without me being invited. So, first of all, thank you very much for bringing this back on the agenda, because yes, I've learned a ton since we were awarded initially, and got scared, because we thought it was us that was doing everything. I also have Joe Miller here, from the Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes. She will be our HUD rep, if you want to call it. She's been nice enough to come from the Minnesota area to help answer questions. We've had a great conversation this afternoon. Also, we, we have our partners in the Health Department here, if you have any questions. And I want to thank County Board Supervisor Ann Lemer. She had called me and started asking a bunch of questions, and I went, I don't know, I didn't see this application. So she pointed me in a great direction, saying what the partnership with the Health Department is. And I love working with the Health Department. I just gotta say, we work on several lead abatement projects and programs, and they are awesome to work with. So when I found out that they are actually being the spearheads of this program, I got so excited, because they do a really good job. So to answer some of your questions, our role at the city is very minimal. We will manage the grant, making sure that the payments are made properly, that the partners are doing what they're supposed to do, and get, the goal is, it's capacity building. We are getting the word out, what does lead do to kids, adults? What are, what does lead-based paint do? A lot of people don't know. And this will also get, give us the opportunity to, just as it says, build our capacity to make it available for other grant opportunities, which I learned today isn't just for lead paint. There's also other opportunities that we can bring more funding to the city of Wassa to help these lower-income homes to get fixed up the way they need to. It's just some exciting things. Again, Ms. Miller's here to, if you have some extra questions. There is an opportunity to have some of the funds go to remediation if need be. We also have our block grant funds, which can be part of that match. Match does not mean that we have to write a check, give it to HUD, and then they put it as part of this program. It means maybe our staff time, maybe it's other programs, maybe it's other things that we're already doing, can be towards that 10%. It's just documenting what we're doing. And that got me excited when talking to the Health Department. I think there's a ton of stuff that they're doing that that 10% can, can go towards. So, yes, please ask your questions, because I am excited about it. I think we can do some really good things, and maybe even show that we can do great things, and maybe partner with the county, go farther out. Maybe it's pie in the sky, but.
Up to, okay, Alder Killian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tammy, I know that at the time the committee took this under account before, it was not so much that anyone denied that lead paint was a hazard. And having been in the real estate industry for almost 40 years, that's something we identify immediately. We have federal guidelines that have to be addressed with all home sales. So I think everybody who owns a home, if they've been properly treated, knows the hazards of lead paint, or they should. I think the issues were financial with the city, and I don't know that that's changed. We don't have a funding source. We are understaffed. We didn't have the cost to hire an administrator. We didn't have the, the finances to send people back and forth to DC, if I remember that was going to be required. And although you say there might be some funds or flexibility for remediation, I know in the 35 years I've been in real estate, only one couple has remediated, remediated their home with lead, from lead, because it is so expensive. So I don't think this is something we can just move ahead on very quickly. I, I don't see that the position of the city has changed financially, so I don't believe I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Can I, I'd like to respond to that.
Yep.
We have a lead abatement grant through the city, through the state, that in the last three years, I've abated 15 properties. All funded through the state. We didn't have to match it. However, our block grant funds were able to assist with non-lead things. So not only were we able to abate the lead hazards, we were able to upgrade their electrical, their plumbing, their heating. So those are opportunities that we have been doing. And I agree with you that during the real estate portion, people are, there is a disclosure, but I don't believe people understand it. I do our homeowner rehab program, been doing it for 28 years, and every time I talk about lead-based paint, people look at me like I'm crazy. So I, I know that it's a disclosure thing, but people don't think about it at the time, because they're excited about buying a house, they don't know what it means, until they have a small child, and now it's affecting them. Now they're going, oh, wait a minute. I, I have to address lead-based paint through our rehab program, even when there's just an elderly person, and I get, well, that doesn't affect me, why do I have to do anything? And unfortunately, it's our federal regulations. I have to address it. So we, I've been dealing with lead-based paint for 28 years. If you want to, please.
I would love to address your question about sending staff to DC and sending them to training. We were talking about that earlier today, and you are allowed to draw down that money ahead of time. So as soon as you sign the contract, you're able to draw down the money from the grant. And so you don't have to have that come from your funds. You're able to do that right away with the HUD dollars. So that doesn't put a burden on the city, because we know you have not budgeted for that right away. And again, those matching funds do not come necessarily out of, you know, your budget. They're things that you're already doing with your CDBG dollars, or with maybe the county's, I know that you have community health workers in the grant, love the community health workers, and the way that those resources are used to educate and do education outreach, and the way that it's written into the grant is wonderful. Love that. And, well-written grant, by the way, and great partnerships. Those will count for matching funds as well. So there's not a lot that needs to be added to the budget. It's documenting the work that's being done and how the resources are being used, as long as they're eligible funds. For instance, CDBG dollars are local funds, they're not counted as federal dollars. And so if it's local tax dollars that are being implemented, if it's state funds, those count as eligible funds. So we would just work with you guys to look at all those eligible dollars that are paying for staff time, for activities, et cetera, and for travel, that would be under the HUD dollars. And I, I don't, I think I answered most of your questions, the two of us did it. Did we miss something?
Nope.
Great.
Thank you for your information.
Alder Neal.
Thank you. Just a question of order here. Our vote tonight on this, is this to accept or not accept the grant, or is it to send it back to Finance for reconsideration? So strictly on whether or not we want to reconsider our previous vote?
It is to reconsider your previous vote, right. So to accept the grant. As to whether we can return it to a committee, I would defer to the parliamentarian.
So that is correct, Alder Neal. That's what you're doing, is reconsidering the vote before. And yes, with any item, anybody can move to refer it back to committee, which would require a second and a majority vote.
Okay, I would just take this opportunity to express my support for accepting the grant.
Thank you. Alder Rasmussen?
Thank you. I'm glad we're having this discussion tonight, because I think what happened originally is, you know, like Tammy said, it was a pretty intense narrative that came with the grant, and I think that caused some panic within, within our staff. And so having had some time to decompress and then speak with our other partners, you know, I think they were feeling different about the funding. And then now, given the fact that we had voted on it, we're maybe wishing we had not. And I think the other agency that we need to hear from is our Health Department partners, and I see that they're in the front row here. So the fact that this is a partnership, it's a city-county partnership, the fact that we can partner with our Health Department, the fact that we can partner and get some guidance from HUD, the fact that we can fund some of our portion through the grant for the administrative and the training part, but the fact also that some of the work that's already being done here can be used to fulfill our share without tapping into or committing additional or any levy dollars. I think that's where this is, like, the facts of this situation are fundamentally different. I hope that we will support accepting these funds and move forward, because I think we can make an impact. One of the things that have been talked about over and over in affordable housing is, how do you rehabilitate old housing stock to make it safe and habitable for people that need it? And we have a lot of old housing stock in Wassa, and it's not just about lead water pipes, there's lead paint, too. And, you know, there are people that, you know, I get the fact, too, in the real estate world, there's a disclosure. But the disclosure, in many cases, people see that as a roadblock to a sale, but they don't necessarily understand what the real health facts are, because they've not experienced it. And I know that Alder Lukens has talked about the long-term effect on students that she has witnessed firsthand, when kids get into these environments and they're, they're unrectified. So I would like to hear from our Health Department partners that came tonight to join us, and hopefully we'll be able to accept these funds with these new facts, and really create a larger impact than we could have done alone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Skidery. I'm the Health Officer of Marathon County, and with me is my colleague, Kate Florick. She is the Environmental Health Director. We were part of this grant process, so we are one partner of a few others. We have, Medical College of Wisconsin was also involved, and H2N was also involved, so, and also Ola, which is generally targeting and helping provide information to the Hispanic population within our community. I want to just address a few questions that have come up. One is that the grant is self-contained, which means that if the council would move forward today, what, what would happen is, we would take this information to the county to see if they would like to move forward with, with our pieces of the grant. So what you would be doing is essentially contracting potentially with us at the Health Department to provide the coordination services required in order to make this grant a reality. We have the ability to manage and maintain the grant, we have the expertise on staff, we do lead work all the time. Of course, as you're well aware, lead is, is not, there's no level of lead that is good in the human body. There's no level of lead that is safe, and it's especially important for children. We're really concerned about developmental issues from lead. And so, and what this does is, it actually creates kind of a neat synergistic opportunity for us, since the city is also always, I'm sorry, since the city is already doing a lot of lead line replacement activities, this allows us to jump on board, because a lot, a lot of those homes are built before 1978. 1978 was the year generally that lead paint went away. And so what we're looking for is, we're trying to identify those homes and those families that are impacted by lead, so that we can come in and do our due diligence to ensure that those kids have a safe and healthy future. Did you have anything on that? All right. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alder Tierney.
My questions are more about the abatement. I understand that this grant is going to go in and be utilized to educate people about the lead paint and to identify that they have the lead paint. I'm understanding that there is possibly some other funding for abatement. I would like to know what kind of dollars we're talking about, because it is extremely expensive, and I really, if we're not going to help these people get rid of the lead, pointing it out, which, lead paint has been talked about for a long time, and there's a lot of people out there that probably know they have it, but they will paint over the top of it, because as Alder Killian said, the cost of abatement is, it's just not feasible for a lot of families. So what kind of grants are we talking about assisting with lead abatement?
So we already do lead mitigation work in the county, and it's, I think it's a misunderstanding that lead, all lead abatement is completely stripping the house of all paint. It really depends on where the lead is coming from. So one of the things at the Health Department that we look into is investigate, where is the source of the lead? It could be lead paint, it could be, you know, I know one time it was, it was actually a piece of lead jewelry that a child was using as a teething toy. So what we do is, we have to go in and we have to investigate, what is the source? Some of the time, we can work on mitigating with some simple tools, and you can maybe go into further what that looks like.
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think it depends, too, if we're talking the remediation or, or actual abatement. Are we doing things to lessen the exposure? Are we going through and fully abating the property? But to speak specifically what you were asking, the city already gets grant dollars from the, from the state of Wisconsin, and I've been in contact with that particular grant officer, Matt. And additional funds can be awarded if we find additional properties that do need that abatement, that full abatement pieces. Within this grant, there are funds for a variety of cleaning supplies and things like that, because even starting there, lead dust is the number one cause of lead poisoning in the United States. So even just teaching people how to better clean and using the right products and using the right products can drastically bring down blood lead levels in kids. So there's, it, there isn't really a one-size-fits-all. There isn't always just, uh, this is what we're going to do every single time when we identify lead hazards. It's really particular to that case, um, not only from a, you know, statutory requirement standpoint, but also, um, protecting the health of, of kids in particular. Our, our statute is six and under. Uh, but this would open up doors for us to look at older children and adults even.
And, and I understand that, and I think that's wonderful. But this grant is for, if I'm not mistaken, it is for lead-based paint? And it's not for other sources of, of lead that may be in the house?
Yeah, and I would say that lead dust piece comes from lead paint in particular.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
So I'm with HUD, Housing and Urban Development. And here is where you find housing and health, um, coming together. So we're talking about elevated blood lev, lead cases. They're talking about the children. How do the children get exposed and addressing those cases? And we're talking about the housing. How does the housing, um, expose the children? What's happening in the housing? And we're the Office of Healthy Housing. And this grant is a lead capacity building grant. We also have a lead remediation grant, a lead reduction grant. We also have a healthy housing production grant. And we have an older adult home modification grant. And all of these are about making homes healthy and safe in your community. And you start that by building capacity. This grant is a capacity building grant. How are you getting health and housing to work together? The lead hazard reduction grant is about 4.9, depending on the size of your, um, city and how much you apply for, about 4.9 million dollars over a three-year period. It's, it's about doing units. This is not about units. This is about building capacity. You can do some units, but you're going to build capacity to get that grant, to start doing those units. The state does have a lead hazard control, a lead remediation grant. And you can bring one in locally, building that capacity. You need to have the outreach and education. You need to have the contractor capacity. This is what this fund will help you to do. It'll get health and housing to work together. It'll help build the awareness and the demand, and it'll give you the timeframe and the staffing, the staffing here to be able to bring in a lead reduction grant.
Thank you. As my concern was, um, staffing as well, because, um, as we all know, the budget is tight. And we have to look at staffing, you know, everybody is, is tight with their staffing, they're tight with their budgets. And I wanted to see how much this was going to place on the city's plate. Because we try to do all these wonderful things for our community, and after the fact, we end up that it's, it's costing either, well, the taxpayers, whether it's coming directly out of their pocket or coming out of the city's funding that they're paying into. And I want to protect the children and everybody exposed to that lead. But I also want to move forward knowing exactly where we stand, um, and I guess our commitment to this monetarily.
And that's where, um, this is showing exactly what's going to happen. I am feeling a lot better about it. I'm not responsible for $2 million. I'm probably responsible for a quarter of it. These guys are doing the majority of it. We can do this. Um, we've been doing this for a while. I am not on the tax levy. Um, I am all grant-funded. So this also gives our department another opportunity to keep doing what we've been doing, but more at a higher capacity. So I, I can assure you, I feel so much better about this, and I know I'm in good hands.
Okay, well, thank you.
Alder Martins.
Thank you. Um, and it's, it's... It's good to hear that, um, you've got, um, the enthusiasm for wanting to accept the grant, because I know back in June when we discussed this in finance, it was totally a different attitude. I had a, prior to, um, Ms. Brodic leaving, we, I had a robust conversation with her on this grant, uh, prior to our finance meeting. And she was really concerned, you know, both about the financial impact and the staffing impact that a grant of this magnitude would bring to the city, um, most notably the, the CDA, especially since that office, that department, it would be at a reducing staffing level until her replacement was found. Um, it's, so, a couple of questions, I guess. Uh, now, the, the city's portion of this is $190,000, but that's over a three-year period, because this is an actual three-year grant. So it would be approximately $43,000 a year, but it sounds like we can apply, um, CDBG funds to that or other staff hours?
And it's not just the city's responsibility. Um, the great thing with the Health Department is their contribution. If they're doing stuff, in-kind work, um, they're getting other grants or getting paid, as long as it's not a federal source, we can count their time and energy and grant resources towards that 10% also.
So the, so the Health Department's work could, could fall under that 10% match?
So could, um, the other organizations they had talked about, Ola, the Mung American Center, um, all of those?
So this wouldn't, this would not have a fiscal impact to the...
Correct.
To either the, you know, the levy or the taxpayers?
Correct.
You know, which, which brings me to my second question. You mentioned in your narrative here, the July 22nd one, about possibly hiring a nonprofit. Would that be for the administration or the paperwork or, it sounds like the county's probably going to handle a, a lot of the, um, the, the details, the, the, the reporting requirements of the grant or?
What'll happen is, um, the city is responsible for the reporting.
Mm-hmm.
It's our grant, so we are responsible. However, we're going to be, it would, what I envision, it's going to be our department's job to get the information from the Health Department, from the other players. We'll put the report together. We'll be working on budgets together. Um, so that'll all happen on our part. Um, there isn't, there is a portion that the city's being paid from this. So say that we couldn't manage it, we have the opportunity to sub-grantee, grant out that to, maybe it's a nonprofit that could help us. Maybe it's the Health Department. Maybe it, you know, it could be a couple of different things. But since I keep learning more about it, I'm finding that my piece is a lot less, um, which I will never complain about.
Okay. Well, that's, that's, that's really good to hear. And, um, I think this definitely puts us in a, any different and a better place than when we, than as the Finance Committee was, um, initially looking at, at accepting this grant. I know one of the concerns we had when we talked about this in finances, we were up at a deadline to accept it. So I'm guessing we've, we've already, there's been invoked some kind of an extension or something at this point in time. So, okay. So that's, that's great to hear. So, um, you've, you've definitely, you know, I, I do, I do like the idea of the city and the county working together with this. So that makes me a lot more, um, excited to, uh, accept this. So I will support it. Thank you.
I just want to mention that the next step would be me taking it to the county to ensure that they were approving of it and moving for, wanted to move forward with it. So that has not happened.
There would be another step in the process.
There would be one more step.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Alder Lukens.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, excuse me. I also will be voting, um, to reconsider this, uh, voting in support of that. Um, um, I had some conversations with Supervisor Lummer after we had, um, voted to, to, oh, after we had failed the resolution. Um, because I learned that, you know, our, if we do not approve this, it does impact then other, the, what you can do, obviously. And, um, you know, I think about, like, we definitely, the budget is a concern. Um, but the more that I learned about this, um, you know, I felt really good about it. And, you know, the, when I think about the different things that we fund, there are a lot of very important, um, projects that we have. But this one especially, and I know that, you know, it, ours is more about the, the help that we're doing with this, like that your office is doing. But, um, anyway, the, the partners that are involved, um, I've worked with some of them through our school. Um, also, the in-kind work that you're talking about, I've worked with grants that, I'm familiar with that. So I'm comfortable, very comfortable with that because that's just some of those work. But the other thing, I think the most important thing is, so we talk about, you know, condition of streets. We fund all sorts of things. And, and that's all important. But this, I will never forget my experiences in working with kids that have been impacted by it because I can never ever change. So you're talking about, we have the power right now here, um, to make a difference in helping to prevent that from happening to children, to prevent that from negatively impacting the rest of their lives because they just can't learn the same. And that's a forever disability. So I, I just think that that, though, they don't have the voice to be able to be in here and, and speak for themselves. So I, I would encourage, I hope, that we can think beyond just our, you know, finances here, our Finance Committee and our budget to, to think beyond, because this is a lot bigger than that. So thank you for all your work, and I will be voting, um, in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Gisselman.
Thank you. Um, just for, for the people of the city of Wausau, how do you come to identify, uh, houses, you know, how do you, um, come to, you know, I guess that's one of your main projects will be to identify. How do you start to identify?
Are you asking currently how do we do it, or are you talking with the grant?
Well, currently and potentially then.
Currently, it's a good question. Currently, there's a couple of different ways, um, we do it. With our state grant, it's all on the Health Department. Because they, unfortunately, the higher priorities for the funding is someone with a child who already has a high blood, uh, blood lead levels. They're already poisoned.
So, so how, how is that, is that through the schools or through your local doctors?
Oh, no, thank you. It's through the pediatrician. They, they do the, the blood draw. And then they have to report to the Health Department if there's, uh, elevated blood levels. So then they go out and, um, have a nurse go out and do, um, education. And also then they have, um, their, um, thank you, environmental, sanitaryian do a full risk assessment on the property. They test painted surfaces. They look for deteriorating paint. They talk about their lifestyle, um, food, nutrition, um, where do they work, uh, what toys are they playing with? Um, I mean, heck, there's some foods that have been identified to have lead in them. So they have a long conversation. It's just not a 20-minute conversation with these families to try to identify how did they get sick. Maybe their house is fine. Maybe they go to babysitters. Maybe they go to grandma and grandpa's house that have issues. So it's, it's a big conversation. And that's how I get involved then, because they let, we have an agreement and there's a release of, um, information that the homeowner or the tenant signs to say that I'm allowed to receive this information so that we can work together to get into this home to identify the hazards and then to tap into the grant to remediate them.
Would that be the potentially, under this grant, pretty much the same procedure then?
Only bigger.
Or will it be different?
Well, I would like to say that it, it really thinks about it in from a prevention standpoint rather than a mitigation standpoint. So right now, we're identified when a pediatrician finds a high lead level. So this means that the child is already technically lead poisoned. Um, what we want to do is we want to identify that before the child is actually at a point of, of being, uh, lead impacted. So, yeah.
How do you?
How do we do that? So, um, right now with the...
Because I think the citizens of the city of Wausau, I think, will want to know that this is being, you know, so...
Yeah. So the, the idea is that, uh, with the lead remediation work, the lead line remediation work, it tends to be in housing that has, um, older stock. So it tends to be, uh, housing that is built before 1978. That's a good place to start. And so we were going to start where the lead lines were being replaced and do some, uh, prevention and identification work through that.
To, to be very specific, we will have devices that can analyze the surfaces in the home to determine if there's lead in them. And we also have devices in the grant that we're purchasing that we can do a capillary test to get a blood lead level much more quickly and easily than doing a venous draw. So those are really the two ways that we're identifying. Does, do we have lead-poisoned people in that house at any level? And can we quickly do an analysis of the surfaces, really looking at paint, looking at varnishes, things like that, to determine if we've got lead in those surfaces?
So is this done from the outside?
No, we'd have to go in the house. We'd have to go in the house. I mean, we look at lead both inside and outside houses, including soils and things like that. But in this...
I'm curious about how you would be getting inside?
Consent from the people who live there. Door knocking.
Door knocking?
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I'm concerned about the privacy angle. Uh, I think it moves, once you, we move into the, um, I'm just concerned about the, the privacy of the individual people that we now will be impacting, because I think it's, you know, this is sort of a, um, to me, an invasion of the Fed, of the federal government coming in and, um, maybe not so. Uh, but, uh, I'm concerned about that fact. And I'm concerned about the privacy of individual homes, individual people, um, so that their own privacy can be maintained.
Well, we will not do any testing on anybody that doesn't consent to testing. Um, and that would be true of any, and even going into their home. Um, the best part of this grant is its capacity building. So we're going to be working with Ola and H2N. And, um, so the, the Mung communities and the Hispanic community and other communities that, so that we can, um, fully educate people and explain to them why this would be a benefit for them. They have the choice about whether or not they would have us come into their home, and they would be fully educated on what we would do and what that impact would be.
And then once you've identified, um, lead in the home, what would be, you know, what would, we, what could we provide then to the, to the homeowner or the family with regard to some kind of help, um, to help the situation?
So within the grant, we have some materials that we would purchase to, like I was talking about earlier, with the cleaning supplies, things like that, um, education, et cetera. We have a statutory requirement as the Health Department that if we find a blood lead level of 10 or above, we, we have to, to issue orders essentially to intervene. Um, below that level, down to 3.5, um, we have different, different things that we do. And part of this grant, as where if you all choose to, you know, move forward, and then the county also chooses to move forward, is to put together that plan in, with more specifics of how we would address it. But I can tell you that right now, the county already does this, but just on a much smaller scale. And it's through statutory requirements. It's through agreements that we have with DHS. It's through a longstanding partnership that we have with the city, because many of the homes that we find, many of the kids that we find that have the elevated blood lead levels where we have to write those orders are here in the city of Wausau. So it's really just expanding on the work and then also having that opportunity to identify places where we, we weren't able to identify before that could benefit from down-the-road funding, um, like our HUD representative was speaking of, to do more remediation and abatement.
And you have confidence of the Marathon County Board?
Well, I, we will be bringing a full proposal to the Marathon County Board for them to, um, determine whether or not it's in their best interest to move forward with it. But, um, I can tell you that is part of the Community Health Improvement Plan to address lead.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Alder Killian.
Thank you. My question was similar to, uh, Gary Gisselman's concern. Suppose the city accepts it and the county says no, what happens to the grant?
That is a great question. Um, and that's where we'll work with our HUD grant, our HUD representatives as to how do we punt? Um, we're very used to punting. Um, do I want to? No. But I, I don't have an answer for you.
So essentially, the city's kind of stuck and has to decide how they're going to deal with all of this?
We'll work with you. Um, this is a capacity building grant, again. So you can go back to the drawing board and figure out, how are you going to use these funds to build the capacity to do lead hazard remediation, to do education and outreach? If the county won't, uh, work with and manage those funds to work with those nonprofits, can the city do that? Can the city partner with one of the nonprofits and do the contract instead of with the county with one of the nonprofits? There's a lot of different solutions. The grant is written quite well. The partnerships are already there. How does that look? How does that look? There are a lot of different avenues to make this plan work quite well, quite easily. And if the county can't do it through that pathway, the other partners can pick up where the county might not be able to, but the county would still be part of it by statutory requirement. It would just be another person taking that contract, and the same partners would still be there, if that makes sense.
Paula Rasmussen.
I appreciate that. It makes me a little uncomfortable, though. It feels kind of iffy for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I think any time that we have to assemble partners, there's always some uncertainty. I do think, though, that the one thing that we want to try to do, and we've talked about it surrounding homelessness, we've talked about it surrounding a number of other things, is we want to look to enhance our relationship with Marathon County. I mean, we've spent a lot of time trying to problem-solve in this chamber and, you know, maybe perhaps criticizing efforts that we assumed were or weren't happening down the street, but only to find that there was a lot of effort happening down the street that we were unaware of. We have county board members in this chamber tonight, so when that item comes to the county board, I would expect that those people who sat through this discussion would be able to talk to their peers and say, you know, this is, it's an opportunity to do good work much bigger and much faster than anyone can do it alone. And, you know, I think that we really have nothing to lose by trying this. We need to, we've figured out how to meet our percentage, but we also then, also need to demonstrate our support for it, so that when it gets to the county board, they understand that we are a willing partner, a willing and active partner. And, you know, I think that going forward, that says a lot. You know, if we, we and our peers in the room that are sitting on that board, that have been appointed to that body, speak to the fact that those managing it have stood here and told us they believe they can do it, and they believe they can do some really good work without a large levy impact. That's exactly what we want to hear. I mean, we want good, expanded work, and we don't want to pay for it out of the tax levy coffers. That is always what we want to hear. So I really think that, you know, we were hasty in our dismissal of these funds, and I think we need to walk that back. I hope that we will approve this tonight so that they can get a chance to get in front of the board and ask them. You know, I think this is an issue that's important to, safe housing is important to a lot of members of that board. That's not just an urban issue. You know, there's rural properties that are old that contain lead too, where people need help, and this is not just a city problem. It's a township problem as well. And so I think that if we all work together and set an example that shows that we can do it, we can probably do better on other things as well. So hopefully, we can move forward on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question and a comment. So the devices you mentioned, would the city would buy our grant and turn them over to the county Health Department? Yes?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Hey, I appreciate your enthusiasm. I really do. So forgive my critique here on the process, because it's, my critique here is on the process more so than the issue. And I'm going to say it here, because I won't probably catch up to you guys later. You know, we talked, it's a city-county partnership. We heard from Supervisor Lemmer, our county health officer. We had H2N Medical College involvement. But I'd like to remind you that on June, in June, at the finance meeting, it failed zero to five. And then again, in July, it failed council one to 10. And the reason it failed is because it was the recommendation from staff, and there was nobody at the city who took responsibility for, or took ownership of this, took ownership of this grant. So if we're going to be a partnership, you know, I'd like to hope that we're back on the spot here, helping us out. And I feel that I owe at least that amount to our staff, because our staff was hung off to dry, in my opinion. But I do appreciate your enthusiasm. And I think if we're going to have a partnership, we better be talking to each other, because we show that we can easily fill the room if we have the right people here and we reach out. I see there's more people in the back even in support of this. So I appreciate that. And again, forgive my critique, but it is, you know, we've spent almost 45 minutes on this, and if it's important to do so, we need to. But we wouldn't be here had we gotten it right the first time. Thank you.
Mayor, may I say one thing real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
HUD also failed. This is a relatively new grant for us. This is the second, this is our third round for this capacity building grant. It is new to us. We do not have all the kinks worked out, and our staff isn't great at managing it. And we gave your staff some of the wrong information, and so we're learning with you. I'm attached to the DC office. I'm here to help. I have a background with these grants. I was a program manager some 25-plus years ago. I've worked with programs around the country as a consultant for the last 25 years and just came onboard to HUD to help them with these kinds of capacity-building efforts. I'm here to help, and I, we are all very sorry that we gave the wrong information, that we caused some of this problem, so it is on us as well, and we are here to learn with you, and we see a bright future for this, and we think it's going to end up being a great example of how we learn together.
Thank you. Thank you for making the trip. Appreciate it. Any further comment? Seeing none, we are ready to vote.
I'm going to reconsider the resolution. You may begin voting. Motion passes nine to one.
Thank you very much. All right. We are at that point. Alda Watson.
I would move to go to recess.
We have a motion to recess. I'm looking for a second, and this would be a recess for the Committee of the Hall on the Lead Service Line Ordinance that we have people waiting for. Okay, we don't have it teed up in the system, but I have a motion from Watson and a second from Lukens. And Alda Neal has requested to speak.
I appreciate, you know, it was kind of hard to shoehorn all this in before the LSL Cow tonight. I'm concerned that, I know there are people here for that issue that would like to, you know, get informed, as do all we. There are also people here for other items on our agenda and what becomes of them, what becomes of us, you know, acting and discussing those items. There's some timely things here, I think, for some people. Are we rescheduling the remainder of our meeting for like tomorrow? Are we going to resume after our recess for Cow tonight and then do the rest of the business tonight?
That was the stated intention, was to resume after the Cow. The Cow was publicized heavily at 6:45.
Right. I just want to make sure everybody gets their due, even if it takes all night.
And with Port and Avoider, is debate allowed on a recess?
Recession is not allowable, but I am going to confer on another item here, because we do have to come back. There are some things that have to get done tonight.